I'd like to call to order the work session for Wednesday, November 5th, 2014. We're going to take Agenda Items 1 and 11 together. So we'll begin with Agenda Item #1, Ordinance #1815, Text Amendment #236, An Ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision, Article 1, Zoning, Division 5, Zoning Districts of the Laurel City Code, Providing an Effective Date. Kristin?
Leave that right on top. We practiced all this today. Leave it right... Bring it up. Right on top. There you go. Should pick up every... I'm sorry, Ms. President. I just wanted to announce, we're trying some different lighting in the room because we're broadcasting, as well as we've moved the mics around a little bit. So again, we're asking for feedback as we move through this process. We're going to try several different things in lighting. So, great. Thank you.
No problem.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. President.
Good evening. The applicant, Ms. Sharon Harris, of Aroma Lounge is proposing to have a text amendment #236 to amend the Unified Land Development Code zoning regulations to allow a retail store with a smoking lounge by special exception in the commercial general, commercial shopping in the commercial village zones. The smoking lounge would be subject to the following conditions if approved: the smoking lounge could only sell prepackaged snacks such as chips and nuts; the sales of the food can only be considered incidental; and also, the applicant is asking to have live performance by band or other performance group permitted only for special events. So it wouldn't be a weekly thing, but only when she has special events. There will be no dancing allowed at the lounge. Retail sales would include cigars, flavored tobacco, hookahs, and accessories. Hookahs, shishas, is a water pipe used to smoke. Tea, herbs, and our flavored tobacco. It can have single or multiple holes and tips to share among a group. If approved, this would be a totally new use in the code.
Thank you. We'll begin with questions and comments. Tonight, I'll start with Councilman Les.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so I understand, this... There was a whole bunch of attachments to this that came, correct?
Correct. I did attach her business plan, some previous events that she's done.
Okay.
Better than support.
Just want to understand. She indicates a beer and wine license?
She is applying for a beer and wine license with the county Class D.
Does she have to have a kitchen for that?
No, she does not, because it's not considered a restaurant.
Well, are the sales only onsite? Are they on and off also?
Only onsite.
Okay, so they can't carry it out?
No.
Okay, just want to understand.
Perfect.
Thank you. And this is limited to, just so I understand, it's limited to cigars, flavored tobacco, period?
Correct.
The kind of material that will be sold in it to be smoked?
Excuse me?
That's the only kind of material that will be sold in this type of establishment under this ordinance to be smoked?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. That concludes my questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Councilwoman Nicholas?
So the bands would be for special events. How often are special events?
When I spoke to the applicant about it, she said special events usually around the holiday period. So she was looking more like November to the first of the year, and maybe sometimes in the spring. So probably maybe once or twice a quarter, if that.
Okay.
Really, she only wanted to have like jazz, like jazz performances, nothing like rock or alternative or hip-hop, something mellow.
Okay, so it's not limited to, she can only have a band four times a year? It's not limited like that?
No, I didn't put any stipulations in there to be limited. If approved, the text amendment is approved, that might be stipulations at the special exception process. I'm not really sure, but right now, it's totally open just for special events.
That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCray?
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't see the reference to adult or an age limit in here at all.
Yes, the applicant said that she would do, I know one night she's planning to have like a college night, because college kids focus on hookah, and of course, they have to be 18 to enter. And she's going to tell the difference, excuse me, by having age bands, like if you're old enough to have alcohol. So she'll have someone to police that. So of course, it'd be 21 to drink and 18 to smoke. Cigars and hookah.
Any other comments or questions, Councilwoman McCray?
Yes. Do we have an address location yet? Is this going to be close to a residence?
Right now, she's looking at possibly 604 Main Street.
The residence up above that address, or I'm not sure?
Excuse me?
Are the residents up above that address?
No.
No, ma'am. Sorry. That's all the questions I have.
Councilwoman Ricks?
I'll take the question one step further than Mr. Les was starting to propose, and is there any chance, the way this is written, that marijuana could be sold in this establishment?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. First and foremost, marijuana is still legal in the state of Maryland, and this is going to be a legal environment where she's only selling tobacco and hookah pens and the stuff to put the tobacco code on it, to smoke through the hose. So absolutely no marijuana.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
These kinds of establishments are growing around the region, certainly around the country. But I want to follow a question that Councilwoman McCray asked about the age. Should, I'm considering, you know, recommending that there be something actually placed in the text amendment that talks about an age restriction, so that we're certain that not this establishment, but any establishment that seeks to do this kind of business, there would be clearly defined age restrictions.
Add it to the text that shows age restrictions, at least it must be 18 to buy the tobacco, 21 for alcohol.
Mr. President, I follow your logic, and I think also that the age restriction is something that I would consider as well, in that it would be clearly stated that an adult going in, going into the establishment cannot bring a child with them to sit there while this smoking is going on, secondhand smoke being the issue.
I agree.
Okay. I'll definitely add that to the ordinance.
Just out of curiosity, and not suggesting that anything like this be added to the text amendment, but in terms of signage that may address the hazards, health hazards of smoking, is that something that is done in these kinds of establishments?
I've been to a few, and I've really never seen anything like that before.
Okay. All right. Okay. Mayor?
And can we come up with, since this is a text amendment that deals with a lot of different things throughout the city, instead of saying 18, why wouldn't we just put something to the effect that the age must, legal requirements of age be met, instead of an age depending on what it is? I mean, you may have another one of these that isn't serving alcohol or anything else. So again, that could change. You know, I don't know if that would be the, if we want to get into stating the age, state law changes, anything else.
That sounds good. I can think of some verbiage to include that doesn't specify the ages.
Are you all ready with that, instead of just doing the?
Yeah, rather than a number. But I think it's agreed, however you word it, that there should be some mention in the text amendment that there are certain restrictions based on age, and as the mayor said, that I agree too. Yeah, yeah, so.
Sounds good.
Counsel, are we ready to introduce this on the 10th?
Yes.
Follow me, Mr. President.
Okay. We will jump to Agenda Item 11.
Okay. Good evening again. The applicant...
Let me read the introduction first.
Oh, sorry.
Just a second. I know you're anxious. I don't have that page. Okay. Ordinance #1810, text amendment #234, An Ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision, Article 1, Zoning, Division 9, Exceptions and Supplements to the Zoning Regulations of the Laurel City Code, Providing an Effective Date.
Good evening. Once again, the applicant, Royal House Chapel International, is proposing to have a text amendment #234 approved to amend the Unified Land Development Code zoning regulations to allow a house of worship by special exception in the industrial commercial services zone. Presently, houses of worship are not allowed in the ICS industrial commercial service zone or in any other industrial zone. A house of worship does not meet any of the purposes set out in the code for the ICS zone. Their use is not similar to commercial contracted storage and distribution services. Our related types of production processes are off its use. Furthermore, the city worked with the Laurel Clergy Association to provide increased opportunities for houses of worship to locate in other zones throughout the city, and the end result of that collaborative effort was Ordinance #177. The legislation allowed houses of worship to locate to residential and all commercial zones without a special exception approval. Unfortunately, staff cannot support the proposed text amendment to allow houses of worship to enter to ICS zone by special exception, and recommend that the applicant look for other locations throughout the city where houses of worship are allowed by right.
Thank you. We'll start with comments, questions, with Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know Mr. Brock has been out ill. Has he been working with this applicant as far as citing?
Carl Brendon actually worked with the applicant beforehand. I'm not sure if Jack had the chance to speak with them.
Is the applicant here too?
I know the city, their attorney is, and I'm assuming the other gentleman are part of the clergy.
Mr. President, I'd probably like some additional time to speak to Mr. Brendon on this, as far as the citing within the city, and also speak to the applicant. I don't know how the rest of the council feels as far as location and the size of the church, and as far as locating within the industrial zone, and also the views of the clergy, as well as the views of staff. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'll just remind you, Councilwoman McCray, and my colleagues on the council, that this is a text amendment, so it's not directly dealing with any specific project at this time. This is just a text amendment.
Correct.
Okay. We'll move to Councilwoman Nicholas.
I would also like to know a little more about it for this particular, for this particular location as well. So I would agree with Donna. Getting additional information?
Again, this is a text amendment, so the additional information would come from staff regarding what's in this proposed text amendment, not a specific project.
Right.
Okay. Councilman Les?
Well, from what I know now of our industrial zones that exist, without judging the applicant, it wouldn't seem like to me, for public safety reason, that that would be a good application for our industrial zones. So I would be leading to agree with staff that it is not a good application, but I will keep an open mind and see if there's any more information that we can garner that would change my mind on something like that. But the industrial zones that I know that exist, I think there would be big public safety problems.
So what I'm hearing from council, majority at least, is that you want more time to examine this text amendment, and an opportunity to discuss any questions or concerns further with staff.
And I would like staff to address the public safety issue of the application in the industrial zone.
Mayor, okay?
We're not going to get into site specific. This is a text amendment.
I realize that.
We cannot get into discussion about where this applicant may or may not put a facility, so we cannot address that. This is a text amendment. You either want the text amendment within the ICS, or you don't. And I think staff and the administration's, as I've spoken to the applicant, we went over the entire process of where churches should be allowed by right, and we have opened that up in numerous places. Churches used to be special exceptions. We're not going to go back into that process, at least from the administration's standpoint. And I think the ICS zone is an area that we want to make sure we continue to keep in that zone. So we're not going to be able to address all of these traffic and other issues, because this is the text amendment. I was just going to say, Bob and Craig, they're actually, the applicant is asking for us to do what we just get away with through the clergy association.
Well, if you remember, Mr. Mayor, we spent a good part of, almost half a year with the clergy association, going through the zoning ordinance to identify appropriate zones to change for allowing churches as permitted uses, and in some cases, special exceptions. In other cases, we removed them as special exceptions and made them permitted uses. And we did this about two years ago, because you all, the council passed a change to the zoning ordinance as a result of that. So this is the first time we've had someone come in and request a text amendment for an industrial zone. So this is the first time we faced this issue. So that was never, it was discussed at the time we met with the clergy association, but it was not, it was not decided, it was decided at that time that the industrial zones were not particularly appropriate.
Very limited for us.
Yeah, we, first of all, we didn't, we don't have a lot of industrial, and second of all, it was decided the other zones were more appropriate, so we focused in on the commercial zones and the residential zones, and opened them wide open for the churches.
So counsel, I'll ask again, without prejudice to any possible application, because at this point, there is no application, because the text amendment is not, has not been approved. So the issue before us tonight is the text amendment, whether or not we want to move forward with that. So I'll, again, I'll just ask, once again, are we ready to move forward with this text amendment? Yeah, the introduction on the 10th, or take a different course? Councilman Les?
Mr. President, as I indicated, I'm going to agree with Ms. McCray, it's the first time I've seen it. I just want to understand all the ramifications of this text amendment. And again, it's not site-specific, I understand that, because that'll be the planning commission will take a look at that. But I would suggest we go ahead and continue this to the next work session. Hopefully, Jack will be back by then, and Jack and Carl can address the council at the next work session and answer any questions we have. That's my suggestion, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments? So this agenda item will be held until the next work session, pending further discussion and information on the text amendment specifically.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 2 is Ordinance #1819, An Ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Employee Retirement Plan to Extend a Deferred Retirement Option Plan. Good evening, Mr. Green.
Good evening. To avoid, we have two members of our Board of Trustees with us this evening. To avoid some repetition, I would point out that this ordinance and the next agenda item are essentially the same. The difference being, one applies to the police plan, and one applies to the employee plan.
Okay, we'll take them back-to-back.
Okay. Both of these ordinances are presented as recommended by the Board of Trustees. The FOP leadership has also reviewed and support the changes as they apply to the police plan. Simply stated, that the deferred retirement option plans will expire December 31st of this year unless the council takes action to extend them, which is the intent of these ordinances. In each case, the drop period, which is the maximum length of time an employee could remain in the drop, is decreasing from seven years to five years. And it goes on, both of them go on to provide that once a drop participant leaves city employment, they must remove their drop funds from the city's trust within 90 days, or will be paid out in cash and taxed according to law. That is it, very simply.
Thank you. Comments, questions? We'll start with Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess we hit the language in here as far as termination, Mr. Green. Is that voluntary or otherwise, or it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter. The drop money is in our trust, until such time as it's removed, no matter why or under what circumstances an employee would terminate.
And we also had the, was this the section where I read the 5% was in there?
That would be the next two ordinances.
Okay. Then I'll hold my question.
There's no guaranteed interest on this. It is whatever the market does for you, or to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Les?
Mr. President, I'm fine with this. We're not changing the length of the period to seven years, correct, Mike?
It's going from seven to five, under the language as it's presented.
All right. We've got people in the plan right now that are at seven, correct?
That's correct.
How does it impact?
They would remain. They could stay.
Their grandfather.
For the balance of their seven years.
Okay. And explain to me why we're going from seven to five?
There is a concern that, at least in the police department, we are limiting upward mobility by allowing people to stay that length of time.
I can address some of that, sorry. If he'll repeat his, I'm sorry, I had to speak to somebody out in the hall. But I can address the, was your question the seven and five?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, if I might, let me first say, when we found out that, Christie reminded me that the time had come for us to look at the timing for the drop program. If you remember, when we started this, you could do a three, five, and a seven. When we first started this, this program, we took small steps. I felt at that time, as I've talked to members of the police department or FOP members, that there was some concern about going seven years. In fact, seven years for a drop program in the police department is very long. There's no other program that I think goes seven years. Most of them are five years. And to also make sure that there was some progression within the chain of command, what we call that, the officers. I was the one that asked us if we could go to a five-year. I support the five-year for the police department. It went to the board, through Mike, and Christie, and others, the board, and apparently, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mike, I don't want to speak for you, but it was brought that both the administrative and the police department were brought up, and they talked about doing five-year for both of those. My concern with doing the administrative side from down to seven is there are a lot more of our employees within that administrative side, in my view, that are not as paid and compensated as much. They're still hanging on after that 30-year period. I think that they could go into the drop program and get up to seven years longer, and still get more for their dollar. And from the police department's perspective, why I think it should go to five was that it allows some progression, quite frankly, within the chain of command, and that's why I support the five and the seven. Now, the board did approve the five-year for both of those, and when I met internally with staff, I said, "Bring that out, let the council talk about it. If you want to keep both at seven, I understand. You want to take both to five, I understand." But I thought that dialogue should be there. I thought you have the members of the board that are here, you've heard from Mike, and you heard where I was thinking. And right or wrong, that was my thought at the time of trying to do the five-year, because there was some concern, they wanted to back it down. I think five years is plenty there for the police, but the seven-year on the administrative side, I just thought it was a way for possibly them to get some extra funds within their pocket. Nothing scientific, but that was, yeah.
Thanks a lot, Mayor. So, Mr. President, we could have, we could approve the decrease to five years for the police department and maintain the administration's. from seven years to five years. And it goes on, both of them go on to provide that once a drop participant leaves city employment, they must remove their drop funds from the city's trust within 90 days, or will be paid out in cash and taxed according to law. That is it, very simply.
Thank you. Comments, questions? We'll start with Councilwoman McCrory.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess we hit the language in here as far as termination, Mr. Green. Is that voluntary or otherwise? Or it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter. If you, the drop money is in our trust until such time as it's removed, no matter why or under what circumstances an employee would terminate.
And we also had the, was this the section where I read the 5% was in there?
That would be the next two ordinances.
Okay. Then I'll hold my question.
There's no guaranteed interest on this. It is whatever the market does for you, or to you.
To you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselman Lenz?
Mr. President, I'm fine with this. We're not changing the length of the period to seven years, correct, Mike?
It's going from seven to five, under the language as it's presented.
All right. We've got people in the plan right now that are at seven, correct?
That's correct. And they would remain. They could stay.
Their grandfather.
For the balance of their seven years.
Okay. And, and explain to me why we're going from seven to five?
There is a concern that, at least in the police department, we are limiting upward mobility by allowing people to stay that length of time.
I can address some of that, sorry.
Mike's done.
If he'll repeat his, I'm sorry, I had to speak to somebody out in the hall. But I can address the set, was your question, the seven and five?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, if I might, let me first say, the, when we, when we found out that, Kristi reminded me that the time had come for us to look at the timing for the drop program. If you remember, when we started this, you could do a three, five, and a seven. When we first started this, this program, we took small steps. I felt at that time, as I've talked to members of the police department or FOP members, that there was some concern about going seven years. In fact, seven years for a drop program in the police department is very long. There's no other program that I think goes seven years. Most of them are five years. And to also make sure that there was some progression within the chain of command, what we call that, the officers. I was the one that asked us if we could go to a five-year. I support the five-year for the police department. It went to the board, through Mike and Kristi and others, the board, and apparently, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mike, I don't want to speak for you, but it was brought that both the administration, administrative and the police department were brought up, and they talked about doing five-year for both of those. My concern with doing the administrative side from down to seven is there are a lot more of our employees within that administrative side, in my view, that are not as paid and compensated as much. They're still hanging on after that 30-year period. I think that they could go into the drop program and get up to seven years longer and still get more for their dollar. And from the police department's perspective, why I think it should go to five was that it allows some progression, quite frankly, within the chain of command. And that's why I supported the five and the seven. Now, the board did approve the five-year for both of those. And when I met internally with staff, I said, bring that out, let the council talk about it. If you want to keep both at seven, I understand. You want to take both to five, I understand. But I thought that dialogue should be there. I thought you have the members of the board that are here, you've heard from Mike, and you heard where I was thinking. And right or wrong, that, that was my thought at the time of trying to do the five-year, because there was some concern, they wanted to back it down. I think five years is, is plenty there for the police. But the seven-year on the administrative side, I just thought it was a way for possibly them to get some extra funds within their pocket. Nothing scientific.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Mayor. So, so, Mr. President, we could have, we could approve the decrease to five years for the police department and maintain the administrative side at seven years. I just want to make sure.
Yes, that's correct. Or, or as the man mentioned, we could do it five, five, seven, seven.
All right, that concludes my questions.
You know, both Jim and Jan are here, and I spoke to them in the hallway. Did I hit all the points that you all were concerned about as well? I just want to.
I think so. I think the board.
That's, yeah.
I think the board thought that the.
Administration.
The administration wanted to file for everyone. I thought, I think we thought that it was the same situation as on the police side and the administrative side, and it's not. We are willing, we are comfortable recommending seven for the administrative side and five for the police side, or making it the way it is. And I think we're prepared to, you know, both sides of that.
Thank you, thank you, Jay. I also, for the record, I had the opportunity to meet with the FOP president and the member that represents the board earlier today and discuss this. Again, I'll take the hit on this. This is probably my, my fault for not making sure that it was clear. And then we had private discussions within, within the administration that I think, I'm not sure Mike, Mike understands, my meetings, stay in my meetings, and not all of that went out. So that was relayed as well. And I think my understanding, they, they're comfortable with my explanation, and they understand it, and just was concerned that they weren't getting the right response as well as the other board members. So that's why I felt it was important to clear it up tonight. So I'll answer any questions if you have any. But thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Counselwoman McCrory?
All right, so now I'm thoroughly confused. Do they still have the choice of three, five, or seven? Or is this a set number?
They would go, typically, they would sign up for the maximum that the, that ordinance provides, and they can leave whenever they want.
Okay, so they don't have to stay for seven?
You don't have to. We couldn't make you stay. But typically, with a couple of exceptions, we've had a couple that say, I'm going in for a year. They had their reasons, and they left after a year. But most pick the maximum and leave when they feel like it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Counselwoman Nicholas?
No questions.
No questions.
Counselman Ricks?
So there is no penalty if they stay the extra year, or the extra two years, or three years, or up to seven. There's no penalty for.
There's no penalty. They're not paying into the plan. They're receiving a monthly benefit. It's just not going to their pocket. The part, the interesting thing, aspect of the drop is that the city's paying out your monthly benefit, but it goes to Schwab, where it's invested under your guidance. I mean, the individual's guidance. And if they do well, they make money. If they don't, then they don't.
But they can get out anytime within that seven years if they want.
But they have to quit to do it.
I understand.
You can't just get out of the drop and remain unemployed.
No, I understand that part. Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Counsel, are we ready to introduce this at the public hearing on November 10?
I'm ready.
Ready for both of them, Mr. President.
I'd be willing to go seven for employees and five for the police department.
Okay, is that the consensus?
That's correct.
Counsel, everybody? Okay, great.
Mike, if you could, in the morning, make sure we, at least to the FOP, we do that, a letter to them under the contract agreement, just to make sure everybody is seeing.
All right.
Okay, so just allow me, just for the record, to introduce the police department's ordinance also, just so it's in the, in the record. That's ordinance number 1820, an ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Police Retirement Plan to extend the deferred retirement option plan. So we've already discussed that. I just wanted to make sure that title was in the record as well. Anything further, Mr. Green?
Not on this item.
Okay. We have, yeah. Agenda item four is ordinance number 1821, an ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Employee Retirement Plan as it relates to interest accruals on participant contributions.
Again, this one would tie in directly with the next ordinance, 1822, which provides the same provisions for the police plan. Again, they are presented as recommended by the Board of Trustees, and the FOP leadership has reviewed the changes and supports them as they apply to the police plan. Simply stated, current employees of the plans will continue to accrue interest on their accumulated contributions at the rate of 5% compounded annually. Future employees hired before July 1 of 2015 will accrue interest on their accumulated contributions at the rate of 5% compounded annually. And future employees hired on or after July 1 of 2015 will accrue interest on their accumulated contributions at the rate of 3% compounded annually. The ordinances also provide that once a non vested plan participant leaves city employee, they will cease earning interest on their accumulated contributions the later of January 1, 2015, or 90 days after they leave city employment.
Thank you.
That's it, very simply.
Comments or questions? Starting with Counselwoman Nicholas?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Counselwoman McCrory?
Thank you, Mr. President. Here's my 5% question.
Okay.
Is this saying that we guarantee the 5%?
Yes, it does.
Why would we guarantee 5% when it's so low right now?
We have for decades.
Is this reconsidered annually by the board?
No, it is not. It would require action by the council, and that's what this does, reduces it to 3%, starting for employees hired at July 1 of 2015.
We have very lucky employees.
I won't argue that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselman Ricks?
No comment.
Counselman Lenz?
Just, so we're grandfathering everybody that's in the plan now.
Correct.
Okay. And we've, the board is taking a look at what the returns are in the plan, and they're gonna go to 3%. That might change in the future.
It might. This is, the first time it's changed, to my knowledge. But it could happen again.
Okay.
It is still probably three times that you could get at a bank.
Okay. That, thank you, Mike. Mr. President, I'm fine with both of these ordinances.
Okay, thank you. Then again, counsel, we're ready to move forward with this for introduction on the 10th. Okay. Agenda item five is ordinance number 1822, an ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Police Retirement Plan as it relates to the interest accruals on participant contributions.
And as I said, we've just had that conversation.
Yes. Counsel, questions, comments? Are we all ready to move forward with this one on the 10th?
Yes.
Very good.
Mike, we look forward to your presentation on the 10th as well.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item six is a draft resolution to set the polling locations for regular voting in the City of Laurel for the general election on Tuesday, November 3, 2015. Who's doing this one?
Mr. President?
Kim?
Yes. Before you tonight, you have a draft resolution that will set the voting location for our November 3, 2015 election. The Ward 1 voting location will be here at the Laurel Municipal Center. The Ward 2 location will be the Robert J. De Pietro Community Center. The same polling locations that we used during the 2013 election. You are required by charter to set the polling locations before each election. So it's presented to you this evening so that we can get some voting guides printed in time to be distributed at the end of the year to all Laurel residents.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rao. Any comments or questions? I'll start, I'll start with Counselman Ricks.
No comment.
Counselman Lenz?
I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
Counselwoman McCrory?
I'm fine.
And Counselwoman Nicholas?
I'm fine.
Thank you. Agenda item seven is a draft resolution to set the dates, times, and polling locations for early voting in the City of Laurel for the general election on Tuesday, November 3, 2015. Ms. Rao?
Mr. President, before you, you have a draft resolution setting the polling place for early voting. And we are presenting the municipal center as the early voting site again for this election. The poll will be open from 8:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. And this was the same early voting location we used for the November 2013 election. And you are required by charter to set the early voting location dates and times as well. So that's why this is here, presented to you this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rao. Counsel, I'll just ask if anyone has any comments, chime in, rather than calling each one of the individual assignments and knowing where they're supposed to go. So we'll introduce this on the 10th.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I neglected to let you know that Chairman John Kish and Chief Judge Bill Welford have both reviewed the draft legislation and are in support of it.
Thank you. Agenda item eight is a draft ordinance to amend the operating budget for fiscal year 2015. Mr. Manzi?
Just checking calendars, that Saturday is not November 3. It's October 31.
October 31.
November 3 is a Tuesday.
So address for early voting?
Thank you.
Yeah, so just, before you get off that, I just want to make sure that's corrected before you get too far.
So that date again, Ms. Rao, the early voting?
Mr. President, the early voting would be Saturday, October 31, from 8:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. here at the municipal center. And the election date itself is Tuesday, November 3, 2015.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manzi. Agenda item eight, ordinance, draft ordinance to amend the operating budget for fiscal year 2015. Ms. Saylor?
Excuse me. This is our fourth amending ordinance for FY15 operating budget. At this time, this provides for a transfer from the Department of Community Planning and Business Services for the salaries for the remaining months of the fiscal year for the Economic Development Officer and the Business Services Coordinator, who are now in the City Administrator's Office, as well as a line item from that budget for economic development expenditures. There's also a transfer for the back-to-school jam, the city council dedicating a portion of its expense allowance and the president's contingency account to be transferred to the Community Promotions Budget, as well as the use by the Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks Maintenance Budget, for the planting of some trees. And for that, we use the forestation, the reforestation funds from the development impact fees. So the net change to the budget is only the $4,604 of the reforestation funds being brought into the budget. The rest are transfers within the expenditure budgets.
Thank you, Ms. Saylor. Counsel, comments, questions? Starting with Counselman Ricks?
No comment.
Counselwoman Nicholas?
I'm fine.
Counselwoman McCrory?
I'm fine with this.
And Counselman Lenz?
I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Saylor. Agenda item nine is consideration of a recommendation to extend a contract for the reconstruction of the 300 block of Montgomery Street. Mr. Ferri?
Good evening. Um, yes, what we're looking for is to reconstruct the 300 block of Montgomery Street by doing sidewalks, curb gutters, ADA compliant ramps, some base patching, milling and overlaying the entire street. As you know, we just did a contract with MT Laney for the 1,100 block, and we're looking to basically allow them to do the 300 block. The funding would be in the FY15 CIP Montgomery Street project at a cost of $117,379.22.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, comments, questions? Counselwoman McCrory?
I'm fine with this.
Counselwoman Nicholas?
I'm fine.
Counselman Ricks?
I'm fine, noting the fact that it would save the city $82,979.
And Counsel, Counselman Lenz?
When did we do the 300 block? Was it about 15 years ago?
I believe so, yes.
About 15?
Yeah, we had a storm drain system put in in that block.
Okay, so that's still operating fine?
Yes.
Okay, the, the under, it's the under drain, I believe, the storm drain, under drain. And we're gonna mill the whole street, the whole 300 block?
Correct.
Okay.
What we're trying to do is, if you notice at Stanley Place, there are two areas that are extremely low.
Right.
We're trying to get away from that. So that's why we want to fix the whole street.
Okay, I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselman Lenz. Thank you, Mr. Ferri. Well, do you have another one? Agenda item 10, discussion on the, on the vehicle and protection and safety project, Dorset Road?
Yes, you know, on Dorset Road, several times a year, we visit this location because of the school opening, and a lot of people.
Who took over this? This is the overlay you're gonna do, right? Okay. Just want to make sure if I knew what we were doing here.
Okay. And during this year's, you know, evaluation of this roadway and stuff, due to the heavy storms we've had, there's, we discovered a severe erosion problem with these stormwater cells running under this part of Dorset Road. It's actually north of Sandy Spring and south of the pool that's out there.
Much to see, but we want to try to give you an overview of what the area is.
Yeah, what happens is, because of the school and everything that goes on there, we've been monitoring this because the roadway is not, you know, it doesn't have sidewalks, curb and gutters or anything. But this has become a potential problem because of the erosion for these stormwater cells. As of yesterday, we posted the area for truck weights, anything over 26,000 pound, we've restricted traffic over these culverts. Basically, we're reassessing the area to see how much, you know, how much it can stand before we need either have to close it or reconstruct these storm cells.
Mayor?
Let me, if I could, Mr. Ferri, a couple of things we are doing. The Rob has been working with Department Communications. We've gone out, we hope to have something on cable about this piece of the property and this area, as you well are aware. If we, now that we know that this is all on our property, we will, if we have the money to be able to do this, which we're saying anywhere from $350,000 to $400,000 roughly.
That's roughly.
To do this, along with curb and gutter and sidewalks, and then the culverts, the pipes, we're gonna have to shut that road down anywhere from, you know, seven to ten, two weeks.
Yeah, about two, about two weeks.
Two weeks. So that, there'll be no, nobody be able to go through that area. So the other piece of this will be that we will have a community meeting to talk about this in the affected area and let people know as well before we do anything. Now, with all that said, I've talked to Rob earlier this afternoon. I'd like to see us try to, we're gonna hopefully identify some money. I'd like to see us try to, we're going to hopefully identify some money, and then I'd like to try to get this done before the end of the year. Now, it could be, depending on weather and everything else, but we think that it's in the best interests of the city, but more importantly, the pedestrians and the road and the cars that travel that road, that we get it fixed. If we don't, and are unable to do that, and the engineers provide us more feedback and information that we need to close it off, we could very well close the road off until such time as we're able to get in there and find the money and fix it. But we think we've identified some funds, and we'll probably come back to the Council with that information as well.
Yeah, the contractor that we had doing the other bridge repairs has given us a proposal, but we have to get the funds in place first.
Counsel? Councilman Lads?
Let me just, just to clear this up in my mind, have we resolved the issue of who owns the road? Has it resolved?
That section, yes.
Huh?
I believe that section is parkland. The roadway probably belongs to the, what is it, condo association, but the properties are ours.
If, let me, just, let me, let me...
We have work to do because there are some areas that we may need to get easements.
Right.
And it's a condo association, which they'll have to follow. So, it's, it's not going to be an easy process, but the culverts where they are, that is our property.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
There's a SWAT. Marty, can you kind of point that out? We found out that through an annexation that it was dedicated property. All that whole entire area you see is, is the city's, and at one time, we thought different pieces of it was owned by a condo as well as other...
The original owners. If I remember correctly, the original owners were mentioned, mixed in the mix.
And there's still issues up top, so there is, there is going to need to be some easements and some other things that will, you know, unless Bob can figure out a way of working with them on that, that could slow us down as well, but we hope not.
We need to resolve that. Okay, so, the school buses are not using that roadway right now. Is that correct? They're restricted?
That's what we're being told, yes.
Okay, we, well, you're always worried about safety there, especially if you get a little bit of ice or rain on the road there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'm fine with this.
Thank you, Councilman Lads. Councilman Ricks?
So, now that we know that it belongs to the city and we're going to fix it, are we going to put in sidewalks and roadways, and will we then take off the restriction?
What is, what led us to this was, there is a lot of pedestrian traffic in that area, a lot of traffic going back and forth. We were going up there to look, to try to figure out ways to put sidewalk, curb, and gutter and fix it up. Can we bring it up to full standards? We're not going to be able to do that because it requires to straighten the road and others. But we can get sidewalks on it, and we can fix the road and do other things. While we were doing that, they discovered the culverts that were some issues, and then there's, there's an inspection program. It's considered a bridge, if I'm not mistaken. It's, culvert is considered a bridge, which is part of our infrastructure, and we ended up, you know, doing this whole bit of, you know, trying to wrap it all in with the improvements as well as the safety piece here.
But again, the other, the other part of my question was, will we then be able to allow fire trucks, rescue squad, buses enter that upgrade? That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselwoman Nicholas?
Yes. Since it's going to be shut down for two weeks, will notices go out to the community?
There is a possibility that it could be shut down for two weeks, could be more, could be less. We will, we are doing a public outreach. Flyers have been sent out. We've got a couple emails from residents already, I think, and we've responded back. There'll be another public hearing or a town meeting, whatever you want to call it, to discuss it in that area. And we are briefing the Council tonight, and then there's a piece that cable television has done as well, which is a very good piece. It really shows you the culverts and the damage that is being done, the erosion and other things being done there. So, the short answer is yes. But I want to make it perfectly clear, we're not prepared to shut that road down until such time as, we've got everything ready, and there's other piece of this. There's legal and some other things that have to be done.
Thank you.
Counselwoman McCrory?
Thank you. Has it, you said a contractor has looked at it?
Yes.
Is there any way they can strengthen from within by placing a liner within it, or it has to be taken out?
The bottom of the two existing cells are basically gone, and it's the bottom that the problem is. They can't, they can't structurally fix the bottom of these culverts. They, they have to be removed and replaced.
Okay.
And the erosion piece done as well, is what really...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up?
Yes.
The contractor they were proposing to use, is that currently in operation in the area?
Yes.
So, there's, will save the startup fees by the mere fact that they're already here? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Let me, we may have to bid this out. Again, Rob's thinking of trying to use a contractor that is in the area. We're not there yet.
Okay.
So, I want to be upfront. We're trying to use contractors, but this could be a price tag that, you know, is, we're going to require us to come out and do a bid and everything else.
Thank you.
We may try to do some in-house as well.
So, now that the Council's been briefed, how do we proceed? Is there anything that the Council needs to do from here, Mayor?
Well, we wanted to brief you in case because first is, we put out a flyer to the community, and you may get some calls, Council may get calls. We wanted to make sure you understood that there is a weight limitation on that piece of the road. We've stopped all, all of our trash trucks. We've been in touch and met with Fire Department Rescue Squad. There are school buses that are not supposed to be using it and continue, in some cases, to use it. We're asking anybody that sees that to give us the bus number. We turn that over to the Board of Education. They should not be using it, it should be going around. And the funding piece will require Council action. And Bob, is there a possibility that the Council may have to get involved with the easement, easement parts of this to allow, authorize me to execute these, or what's, I know we're kind of just...
It's, it's possible, Mayor, but it may, it may not be necessary, depending on what the, it depends on what the easements are for.
The funding sources, I said to the President just now, we may end up, I don't want to do it, but we may end up having to have a special meeting just on that if, depending on where we get the funding, where we're identified, and we may have to make some changes. I don't, I'm just not prepared. The biggest piece of this was to make sure you all knew what was going on because the flyers went out this afternoon. So, we're trying to move quickly, but we're trying to move cautiously to make sure that we're covering this and that we're doing the right thing and that there's not a problem later on down the road.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Faree. Counsel, that concludes our work session agenda. Is there anything else to be brought before the Mayor and Counsel?
You got anything?
Okay, seeing nothing, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.